Okay, everyone, it's 6 o'clock. And call us meeting, we're having a planning board, March 18th, 6:00 PM, Abingdon Town Hall. We've got a call in here. You guys want to go with the minutes of 3:4, 24, or 3:6, 24? Any additions, deletions, comments?
Not for me.
Rick, you got it? The other Rick, you got it?
I'll set.
I'll set. Someone like to make a... We can do both. We can approve both of these sets of minutes at the same time. So would someone like to make a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have any formates?
We do not.
Okay. Correspondence?
We do not.
Zoning Board of Appeals Agenda?
Not tonight.
All right, so we can just move right into the heat of the discussion tonight. Discussion, action. Discuss and agree if practical to amendments to the MBTA Community Zoning Bylaw. And I guess I'm gonna let Liz and Kevin lead off with your comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've spoken, was able to speak to some of you ahead of the meeting and explain, because we didn't continue the last hearing to a date certain, we've advertised that now for equal first. But I talked to the town manager and town council, and we thought it would be better if we could have the version you guys want to see in the warrant, in the warrant. So hence why we're meeting tonight, to go over and agree to or not agree to, as the case may be, the changes that have been promulgated by town council, the Attorney General, and our consultant Judy Barrett. So you guys have the second to the most recent document. Judy Barrett sent me one late this afternoon, and I just couldn't kill more trees for the small change. Her change, I think, I explained to... That's the one, yep.
This is getting a little hard to keep up with.
Right, so I'm trying to make it easy, because there were a lot of fingers in the pie at this point. I've also provided you guys with my cheat sheet, which are all I went through, everybody's changes.
Oh, the stuff?
And said that's where the changes are coming from and what they are.
Which one is that?
Which one is what? Oh, that's just a single sheet. So you should have a full copy of the zoning bylaw that says use this, Amy, AG, and Judy cha... Oh, no. Amy K incorporated all the changes.
So this is the...
You can send that to our people.
Yeah. This is like the movie Airplane.
It is like the movie Airplane. It's like a lot of movies.
Okay.
So anyway, you guys should have the MBTA Community's zoning bylaw with everybody's changes incorporated into it, highlighted with notes, and then the only other change that I have for you tonight on top of that is I had a conversation with Judy Barrett earlier today, and she brought to my attention that another client had issues with EOL, HCC, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, DHCD, or whoever they are now, that will be approving this, that the minimum frontage needs to sort of be compliant with the size of the lots. So I went to the assessor's office, we looked at all the minimum frontages, and the smallest was 38 feet, so I asked her to drop it to 35 feet. But that is up to you guys, of course, but I just wanted you to know where that number came from. It was 75, and I've made it 35 for compliancy's sake.
So that it is consistent with existing?
Yes, what exists today.
Okay.
Otherwise, everything would be noncompliant and have to go to the zoning board.
Right, it would need a variance, right, or a special permit or something, and that's what they're trying not to have us do.
Liz, could you point out where that 35 is?
Right, in the dimensional... The density and dimensional regulations on page two, section E. If you go down to minimum frontage, and it says lin... Well, it says lin feet, for linear feet. The 75 is there, and then it's crossed out, and a 35 has been put in there. So Judy made that change late this afternoon.
So cross out the 75?
Cross out the 75 and add 35. Nothing else on that table changed.
Discussion on this?
Frankly, I'd like to go through each one. I mean, I don't think we're gonna reject each one, but I just want to make sure that there's so many moving parts and pieces that we literally put our fingers on each one to make sure we know where we are. And it might take a few minutes, but I just...
Sure.
Like I said, there's so many different versions out there.
But we're all working from the one that says Amy K on the top of it.
313 version from Amy K, incorporate all changes?
Yes.
All right.
Yep, so if you want to go through that, we can. That, like I said, the 35 was the only change that I received late this afternoon that's not included in that copy that you guys have. So I wanted to make sure you had that before we started going through. Okay, so to see if the town will vote to amend the Abington zoning bylaw and zoning map by adding a new section, 175-40A, multi-family overlay district as follows. So the changes to that are, we added "and zoning map" and the language as follows.
And so the zoning map language is... We got that today too, right?
No.
No?
No, that's been, I think the AG added that, I think Attorney Riley brought that to our attention, and then I think Amy Questle added it. So those were those two changes, and then...
And part B, sorry, mentions the zoning map on the first page, but there's a blank date that has to be put in there.
It's funny, I did that on an earlier version, so it keeps escaping my eye, because I already filled that in. So I'll need to add the date. And then applicability, section one. The addition of uses and dimensional controls of the MFOD are not subject to any special permit requirements of the underlying district in or applicable overlay districts. I believe that was part of the watershed protection district language, and then I asked her to clarify that even further and specifically call out the watershed protection district, which is done on a further page. But I don't think this is bad language to keep. It sort of gives a second layer of protection on what the board can and cannot do.
Okay, so just to make sure if I understand it, the underlying district would be a floodplain district?
Yes.
And in the floodplain district, we have dimensional requirements or use controls?
No, no. The underlying district would be either the R20 or the TOD, wherever.
Yeah.
Whatever exists now. So if, for example... May I speak, sorry?
Sure. Well, I'm not... Well, I can't say sure, he can, but so... But the watershed is another overlay district.
It's an underlying overlay.
An underlying overlay district.
Right, but that's more than what this is concerned about. It's not the R20 or the TOD, it's the... And the watershed district has controls on uses particularly?
Yes.
But not so much dimensional? Or am I mistaken that?
No, I think that's for maybe any other uses we're not thinking of, but Attorney Riley wants to...
I'd like to recognize Attorney Sean Riley.
So Attorney Sean Riley or Moderator Sean Riley?
This is...
I think you've got your attorney.
I'm wearing both my hats. I want to try to make... As moderator, I want to make sure it's clear, just like you guys do. But to help make it clear, I can tell you my knowledge of zoning law. Do I need a microphone? I see.
You have an extra one. Why don't you just bring a chair up?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Very briefly, hopefully. So, for example, if your MBTA overlay district may sit on top of R20 property or TOD property, the R20 requires a special permit for multifamily. The TOD requires a special permit from the planning board for 100% residential. This language would say you don't need to go get those permits, because this MBTA zoning now kind of takes over control of that issue, it's gonna allow 100% residential. So that's one level. The watershed overlay district, which also partially lays over the same area that this MBTA overlay district does, the watershed has some dimensional in that it says, if you have more than 2,500 square feet of impervious surfaces, then you need a special permit from the zoning board.
Right.
Or if there's a change of use, any change of use, you need a special permit from the zoning board. Those would not be necessary, because this MBTA bylaw now already incorporates and takes care of that issue too. So if you... Now, it has language in there too, where a property owner could... Basically has to make a determination when they file their applications that, I would like to develop this property pursuant to the existing underlying zoning laws of the R20 or the TOD. And they just go down that road. Or they can say, I want to apply under the... What are we calling it?
Multifamily overlay.
The multifamily overlay district or the MBTA district, or go by those bylaws.
Administratively, that already exists. So we already had R20, we already had the TOD.
Yep.
So that exercise of saying, this is how I want this application to be submitted, is something that is already in place today.
Right.
So as an example, I personally just handled... I'm still involved in a project where we had to come to the planning board for a special permit on Center Avenue for the 100% residential use. We had to go to the zoning board, because it was also on the outskirts of the watershed, and get a special permit for them to approve it, because of the impervious issue I mentioned. That's still there unless the applicant elects to file under the MBTA multifamily overlay district bylaw, then you have to apply by those rules.
So I think the main one that really plays here, it's not so much fertilizer storage or chemical storage or whatever, it's more lot coverage would be the one that really is the stickler. And what we're saying here is that the lot coverage restrictions we normally would have in the floodplain district, we're not going to multiply here.
Right, we have a minimum lot area of 30,000 square feet and maximum lot coverage is 50% for lots.
Yeah. So we're kind of sacrificing those standards to include this as part of the MBTA zoning district?
Yes.
Okay. And we're... We don't run afoul of any other environmental permitting by doing this? Those are our own? Like, do we have to have floodplain zoning?
Floodplain water protection district?
Yeah.
Yes.
We do, okay.
Yes.
So we're not running... By changing that or by overriding those, we're not running into any sort of environmental issues, are we?
I can't even pretend to be the legal expert on that, but town council has reviewed this, and they... And was aware of this. She actually provided the language.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't affect wetlands, but conservation commission?
No, no, no. And maybe that's where some of the... Some people might be confused about that, as very easily... You know what I mean? It's very easy to confuse wetlands and watershed protection, and then the conservation and DEP bylaws. And this does not override any of that whatsoever.
Yeah, we have... So the way to explain it is that we have expanded criteria for building in a floodplain district. Floodplain does not equal wetland, which I think is a good distinction to make.
Right, I think we have to say floodplain watershed protection district?
Yeah.
Floodplain wetland.
Wetland protection, sorry, I know, right?
So we're not easing any of those conservation restrictions?
No, no, we're not... Or DEP, nothing.
We're essentially saying we can set aside some of the dimensional requirements, the additional dimensional requirements that we put in place for the sake of the MBTA zoning
Just before we proceed, can we talk about like, you know, this is an overlay district, right, but the underlying zoning is whatever, is R2, R3, and TOD, right? So it's important to notice that this... I'm learning the new acronym, MFOD?
MFOD, yep.
MFOD is an overlay district over the existing zone.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's important for folks to understand. All right, thank you.
This is gonna be a lovely cake when we're all done, with layers and layers.
Overlay on top of overlay.
Yep.
Mr. Riley?
To that point, can I also share that, and it was in this video discussion that we taped at Abingdon Cam. Abington's... The effect of Abington seems to be a little different than other towns, because the existing R20 and TOD zoning that's in place now and has been for 20 plus years already allows multifamily housing by special permit. The biggest change, if you want to call it a big change, is that if you apply it under the MFOD, MBTA zoning, you don't need to get that special permit anymore, but you still have to comply with all the other regulations in the MFOD bylaw.
Right. And we're probably making the dimensions a little bit easier for developers too.
Right, but still...
But not 40B easy, right?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're still being held to, the regulations are not... It's not like a 40B, which confuses some people too with multi-unit.
And you're still living at the no more than three-story stall?
Right.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people are fearful or envision eight-story, 10-story, 10-minute hours ago, and that's not allowed under the proposed bylaw.
I think a lot of people envision what's going on in Wayne, Mifon, Route 18.
Yeah.
And that's what they're afraid of, but, you know, as I was reading this and I saw it was just limited to three stories, that put my mind at ease, certainly. Excuse me.
Okay, and the next comment is under applicability, section two, multifamily development in the MFOD shall not be subject to section 175-28 and 175-32. And that is from Amy Questle about minimum floor area requirements for apartment units. The Attorney General had had some question about that, and this was Amy Questle's response was to add 175-28, 175-32. The next change is screening for parking under site development standard under section G, and then Amy Questle added... It says more than three feet, and then she added... Incorporated the questions from Attorney Riley, so that... I went back and I sent these to our consultant, who said it would be up to the... It would be a board decision on how to proceed with his comments. So you received those at the last meeting. And they're specifically a request to reduce the bike rack requirement to six spots and not cover. And the language regarding the fences, which height to choose, is it gonna be solid or other materials, he can explain those himself. And then the light trespass language, and then change definitions to section J, definitions applicable to this bylaw.
I thought that you made some solid comments, Sean, on the fencing, for example, and the bike, you know, requiring the bike thing, you know? Conceivably, that would be a separate building and stuff like that, and if popularity of bikes take off in the future, we should allow, you know, the possibility of building more structures for that. And the lighting, so I thought those are solid comments, sir.
So I just wanted to try to understand this bylaw, section... That section 3B that said you can't have a fence over three feet between your parking lot and sidewalk, I ask why? Because usually you want to block the headlights with a higher fence, but...
It's within a landscape buffer, though.
Yeah, so depending what's the landscaping is, it might do the job for you. I'm not so worried about that being in place, because later in this same section G, under 13, the planning board came by majority to vote grant a waiver, so you could allow a four-foot or five-foot or six-foot fence if you thought it was appropriate given the circumstance. So that, that's okay. I just want to raise that to you to say to you, would you rather say, let's assume a six-foot fence and waive it to go lower, or assume a three-foot fence and waive it to go higher? That's the only point, but you have the ability to adjust, which is good.
So given all the various inputs that we've had to this, so what was the origin of that?
Uh, three feet? It was our consultant.
It was the consultant?
Yep. Everything in here was...
And when we went back to the consultant and said, see the comment?
I sent her Attorney Riley's comments.
Why three feet? She said, well, that's the board's decision.
She said that the board can make that call.
Yeah, my preference would have been that...
She wasn't married to that.
Yeah, my preference would have been that she would explain... Would have explained why it was worded that way and why it was proposed that way. So there had to be some plot process that went into it, but...
It's probably because it's more attractive.
We don't know what it is.
I'm assuming it's an aesthetic thing that you don't...
Yeah.
In some... Many locations, you don't want to create a wall along every sidewalk that has a parking lot, so you start with three.
Aesthetics.
Yeah, and, you know, so it's more of a... It's a detail added to the landscape buffer, which is, you know, nice looking. But there may be a situation, depending on the configuration, where the board says, we want you to have a higher fence, because the way it's aligned with the driveway, you're gonna be blocking drivers.
Yep. If the landscape buffer is well done, then I can see how a three-foot fence aesthetically would fit into that buffer probably a little bit nicer than something that was six or seven feet tall and blocking the landscaping.
Exactly. So I'm okay if you want to leave it, I just wanted to bring it to attention and say, okay, what's the intent of this?
So should we change this to the buffer may include a fence or wall of no more than six feet in height, unless there is a... Actually, you know what? I would prefer just a fence of no more than six feet in height, because I don't want to start seeing six-foot walls.
Yeah, a six-foot tall in a landscape buffer.
Yeah.
Which could be adjusted.
The current zoning bylaws require a six-foot solid fence in certain areas. This requires a three-foot fence unless you decide, the board decides differently.
Yeah, I would just rather just keep it simple and chop it off and say the buffer may include a fence or wall of no more than six feet.
That's the key right there, no more than six feet.
And then later on, we give ourselves permission to say, well, waive it if there's a need for it.
Well, that would allow a developer to come in with three or four or six feet.
Yeah.
As a first option.
Right.
And we then would have the opportunity to say, we don't care for that.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so just chop it off and say no more than six feet.
You know, I think this fence issue was a big deal, and no pun intended, as long as it's not too big a deal over six foot tall. That was...
So do you want me to add fence size may be amended by vote of the planning board? So would read screening for parking, surface parking adjacent?
Say that again, Liz.
So for that section, for section B, screening for parking, surface parking adjacent to a sidewalk shall be screened by a landscape buffer sufficient with to allow the healthy establishment of trees, shrubs, and perennials, but no less than 10 feet. The buffer may include a fence or a wall of no more than... You guys want to put six feet, right? In height versus the three feet?
I would just do... I'm sorry. Fence of no more than six feet in height. I don't know why we'd need a wall of six feet.
All right, so fence of no more than six feet in height, and then did you want to add fence size may be amended by vote of the planning board?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's already in there in the waiver protect... Waiver section of the 13?
Yeah, so putting it here could be redundant, Liz, if it's already covered.
I'm just reading this, and it says, unless there is significant grade change between parking and site, in which the fence shall or wall shall be a minimum of three feet six inches. So that, you're just talking about a minimum here.
Well, I believe that's a building code issue. That, so if there's a drop-off, you need to have a guardrail or some sort of pedestrian rail of up to three and a half feet high to prevent people from falling. If there's more than, I think it's a three-foot or four-foot drop. So I think that that's what that language is about, that at least three and a half. So I guess the decision for this board is, do you want the initial design to be no more than three feet unless they ask for more and you grant that waiver? Or do you want them to come in with something up to six feet unless you decide to require a change? Your decision, not mine, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
So what's the pleasure of the board on this?
Well, it sounds as though regardless whether we allow this to go forward in a way that says three feet, and the board can then decide they want it to be taller, to your earlier point, or six feet, and the board decides that we want it to be smaller. That there isn't a significant difference either way.
No, I think the only difference would be whether you want to add back the term wall if you're gonna go to three feet.
Which implies a stone wall.
Yeah, a stone wall, brick wall.
An ornamental stone wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, brick wall, right. Interestingly, it doesn't even use the word solid fence in here, it just says a fence. So you could have a four-foot-high post and rail fence that would need your approval, because it's more than three, which is fine. I mean, that's hottest site plan approval.
I think you mentioned in your comment that this would preclude, if it was limited to three feet, that would preclude your average post and rail fence.
Unless you approved it.
Yes.
And like I said, if the intent was to prevent... Most fences in the parking lots have to prevent headlights from shining on the neighbors, so a three-foot-tall fence is probably not gonna do it with today's SUVs and large pickup trucks. So you probably want something more, unless you have suitable plantings, but how long does it take for them to grow? Depends what you plant. So one or another, you guys are gonna look at this, so it's just what do you want to tell the designer to start with?
Up front.
Something up to three or up to six. You know, show us something, and we'll tell you if we like it or not.
Halogen headlights on vehicles these days, which are really strong headlights, you certainly want something that could prevent light trespass from those headlights. It's not like the old days where you had the older headlights that didn't have the penetration that the ones today have.
I just want to make sure that also that these parking areas, that this is applying to buffers between maybe the parking and a lot line, or does it have to have a sidewalk in order for this to apply? So you pull head in, and the headlights are facing a lot line, but there's no sidewalk between the car and the lot line. Does it still apply? I think it does, because there are general bylaws that says you need to have screening. Screening, but I have a feeling this is more for if in the middle of the property there's a parking area, you need to screen it in too. Does that make sense?
This one only applies to parking lots that are above sidewalks, correct in that regard. And it doesn't even require a fence. It says you may have a fence or wall of up to three feet, because there may be... Again, you can't write... There's no perfect bylaw, because every layout and department is gonna be a little different. You may not need a fence at all because of the way things are lined up, because you have, you know, an acre of wetlands that you're shining your headlights into that will never be touched, okay? But this says if you're gonna put a fence in, this is what we all need to start with, up to three or up to six.
Well, and I think that six is probably a good way to go.
Yeah.
And then bring it, as you see, bring it down if we... Or if somebody wants to bring it, a good developer wants to bring it down.
So it's a consensus that six feet you go?
Yep.
All right, let's mark that up.
Yep.
And move on to the next thing.
Is it fence or a wall of no more than six feet? Fence. I thought we were doing just fence.
No, fence, right?
Fence.
No wall. We were gonna put a wall back if there was three. We were going to put a wall back if there was three.
We're not building a six-foot wall around a parking lot.
That would be an amazing wall.
Okay, so, the next one is light trespass onto adjoining properties. And that was my addition because I'm having issues with another property in Abington with light trespass. And the person involved in the project said, "Well, the board approved it." That was his response to the zoning board. And I mean, the zoning enforcement agent asking them to shield the lights because they're trespassing onto somebody's property, so it's up to you guys.
Is it a commercial or residential property?
It's a commercial property shining onto multi-residential properties.
And they said, "We approved it," or the zoning board approved it?
You approved it.
I don't know what world-
The lighting plan.
I don't know what world that would have happened.
The lighting plan that you guys got during the site plan review.
It had light trespass on it, we missed it?
I think we went through this with the Lowe's, remember? The sign and the lighting, when that went through. Are you guys on the board then?
No.
Mr. Riley?
My only comment to this one is, as written, well, it, it's the same discussion as the previous discussion. As written, if you say, "No light passes on adjoining properties is not allowed," that means zero on flooding properties. Which is very difficult. Or I'm thinking of one that we did up on Chestnut Street where you wanted a light at the driveways in a section with the street. Well, naturally, the light trespasses beyond the property line. But we wanted that to kind of illuminate that area. Because you have that ability to waive the no light trespass, I'm okay with that, if you guys, you know, if an instance comes up to say that, we'll let this happen. But it's still, even if you put a light pole, depending on how high it is, and you're assuming it's shielded, most of them are going to leave zero-foot candles on your neighbor's property line. But with this, you can't even have point-one-foot candles. But again, with the right to waive it, I think you guys have a ability to look at it and say, "It's okay in this instance." Or in this instance, we need it to be dark because it's a residential neighbor. That was my only asterisk, be careful of this one. You know, strict prohibitions can be dangerous, but that waiver language, I think, saves you guys, gives you the flexibility. That's all.
It's up to you, but I think it also requires that the board looks at the lighting plan carefully, which I don't think we always do. I think sometimes we hope that the engineer, or, I mean, the engineering group is doing, whoever is reviewing the plan is doing it. And that may be the case, but I'm not sure that, I mean, I didn't even see it until I went back and looked and very clearly showed foot candles on the neighbor's property. Now, I think the light is beyond where those foot candles were. But I'm not a lighting expert in this particular case, so.
Well, going forth, well, Jeff, Jeff is, Rangel is the lighting expert on the board. But going forth, we will do our due diligence when we have a, a lighting issue going forth. We can't revisit the past, but
No.
let's just step up our game in the future on this.
Unless it pertains to this particular provision, then, I guess, my thinking is that default position might be, we leave the language as restrictive as possible, given that we can relax it.
Yeah.
But then, but by default, it's restrictive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So, I think Amy's comment was, "Light trespass onto adjoining properties is not allowed unless approved by the planning board as part of the site plan approval process."
That was mine.
Oh, that was yours, okay.
That was my suggestion, if you wanted to put wiggle room in, but then I turned the page and saw that you had wiggle room.
The one, yeah.
Yeah. And I would also note that there is a outdoor lighting zoning bylaw that could also be enforced by the building department. It's pretty much the same bylaw that you review on site plan, so.
But it's becoming hard?
Yes.
So, everybody's okay with that, that they can waive the lighting afterwards, okay?
Yeah.
Bicycle parking, multifamily development, there shall be a minimum of one covered bicycle storage space per dwelling unit. So, I believe that Attorney Riley asked for a bike rack not covered of six spaces for every ten units with the feasibility that you could always add more later. Right?
I had two concerns. Well, the main one was that it was required to be covered, which creates a structure, which creates different zoning bylaw setbacks and it eats into your open space. The second one was the number of bicycle slots, one per unit. I think that's a great lofty goal that everybody who rents an apartment within a half-mile of the T owns a bike. But I just think you're going to see a lot of large empty bike racks. So, it was, could we reduce this to one for every two units or some other mathematical formula? And the covered, if you could just leave the word covered, I think it makes a vast improvement. But again, as part of site plan review, you would have the opportunity to say, "You know what, we're going to, we're going to request that this be covered." But I don't think that that should be the minimum standard personally.
You know, I worked at Old Colony, we did study of bike utilization at the train station here in Abington. And very few people, you know, I mean, there's departments right near the train station. Very few people, you know, utilize bikes. There were a few dedicated people who did that, but most people drove or weren't.
Unfortunately, the reality is people are concerned about locking their bikes at the T station while they're in Boston for ten or twelve hours. And sometimes they go home and the bike's not there.
Yeah, I, I generally don't think there's outdoor storage is in high demand as indoor storage. So, you know.
That's a thought, do you want me to ask her about perhaps changing that to indoor storage?
No, meaning like they would store it in their apartments?
Oh, right, like not having a separate area to store bikes? In a foyer or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because generally, they're not going to leave them tied outside in winter and snow and everything else, so it just-
So, we're going to change it to?
You could delete the whole thing, you could delete the word covered, you could change the mathematical formula that's up to you guys.
I would just delete the word covered.
Well, that addresses one part of the concern.
Yeah.
And the second part was, is it going to be one-to-one?
Right.
Which seems a little over the top to me.
And you have to envision, it could be a duplex, it could be four units, it could be eighteen units. What's a good formula?
Matt, do you have a thought? You look like you had a thought.
I think one-to-one's a little much
Okay.
right now. I think half-to-one.
So, for every two dwelling units?
Yeah, that probably makes sense.
That, that, that's how, so when I was working in Boston, it was one-to-one. And this, this is not Boston. So, so I, I just, I don't think it's applicable to Abington.
So, it's for two dwelling units?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then under buildings, Section Eight, subsection D, "To encourage clustering of buildings and preservation of open space, placement of buildings shall be subject to review and comment by the fire chief for safety purposes." Originally, this said approval by the fire chief. I did email the fire chief to see what kind of footage he wanted between buildings, and I didn't receive a response. Marion, Juan Ryan, who works for the zoning, she's the zoning enforcement agent, she suggested fifty. That's what I sent back to Judy Barrett. And then, I believe she suggested twenty-five as a realistic number. So, that is what is in our density and dimensional regulations, is twenty-five. But it kind of circles back to this, the chief getting a number from him, I wasn't able to do that, so I were-
Judy had a specific reason for twenty-five, didn't she?
She has a specific reason for the whole density and dimensional table, and she crafted it based on eighteen units per acre. And when you take in the open space component, and the parking component, and the unit component, that, those are the numbers that'll work.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, twenty-five feet between buildings was one of the-
Was, was it reasoned, a reasoned number?
Yes.
Not a stab in the dark?
Yes.
So, I mean, the fact that it was a reasoned number, it's too bad that the chief didn't get back to us on this, but, you know, I trust Judy, and I trust that it was a reasoned number.
Yeah.
So, I'd say just go with the twenty-five.
Okay.
Hypothetically, if all of a sudden the chief decides, "No, this is an issue," would we need, do we need to change it? Is this, do we change on the floor, or do we need to post a public hearing? I forget how the whole-
It can be amended on the floor.
I, I think, was it Judy or the, or the Attorney General was concerned that the original wording required the approval of the fire chief.
Right, that's specific, yes.
It's more the, the space between buildings.
Oh, I see.
The twenty-five feet or fifty feet. If he says, "No, fifty feet really is the standard that you should have," can we amend that on the floor of town meeting? Or does that require, does it go beyond the scope or whatever that term is?
Yeah, he could, it would be a larger one, which would be probably out of order. In the past, the, the, with multi-building projects, it's been a minimum of twenty feet separation that I've experienced. So, I think twenty-five is going to be perfect. Can I just, sorry, back up, bicycle, Liz and I, and Tom Manager, I'll try and update the law so we can get it online as quickly as possible. The bicycle parking was going to be one-to-two?
It's going to be for multifamily development, there shall be a minimum of one bicycle storage space per two dwelling units.
Covered was crossed out.
Covered is crossed out, yeah. You're not going to do these tonight, are you?
Look, I can't sleep.
Okay, so, the next one is twelve, which is any multifamily development within the MFOD and we're striking project and leaving shall comply with Section 175-24 Watershed Protection District to the maximum extent practicable. The planning board shall review for such compliance or site plan review. Multifamily development projects in the MFOD are exempt from special permitting requirements of, I think we can strike out the and just put in Section 175-24 requirements of Section 175-24, which is the Watershed Protection District watershed and-
Watershed Protection District.
Watershed Protection District.
So, I'm going to apologize to everybody right now with the watershed stuff, but I spent three hours at OCPC today on a water steering committee meeting. So, I literally have water on my brain.
Out of curiosity, is there, if we didn't make that change, is it something that would qualify that we wouldn't want to? Or are you just kind of being redundant? Because, I mean-
Well, I think it's redundant to that other change that she, she suggested, and I asked her to do it, so it was very specific about the watershed protection district.
Go ahead.
I mean, that other one is aimed at the watershed protection district, but does carry over into other layers underneath.
Yeah.
Sort of a catch-all. And this is specific about that. I think we're, we're trying to be as specific as possible with EOL, HCC.
Yeah, just interesting, you know, crossing out residential, putting in multifamily development, well, I mean, there wouldn't be any commercial development under this. And there wouldn't be single-family development under this. So, I just feel like we're getting redundant, but maybe just clarifications.
I, I took it as re-emphasis to anybody, a property owner, who had to decide whether to apply under the MFOD regulations or the TOD that MFOD is only for multifamily residential, so if you're thinking commercial, this is not going to apply and you are going to go with the other bylaw and you are going to go be subject to watershed protection overlay.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm pretty sure they, when the AG and Judy and Amy all went through this, they made some of those changes to send that message home that it's all multifamily residential.
Yeah, and I think the, the fact that you say that these MFOD projects would be, would comply with the watershed protection district to the extent practicable happens in practice anyhow with site plan review and with DEP stormwater management. So, you are, you will be protecting the watershed, which is not as specific in some of the watershed bylaw language. If you don't comply with DEP stormwater, you're not getting anything built.
All right, so you guys are okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so the next one is, under development plan approval, Section H, development within the MFOD shall be subject to Section 175-77 of this bylaw to the maximum extent possible. Section 175-77(c)(2) shall not apply to multifamily development within the MFOD and no provision of 175-77 shall allow a denial or unreasonable conditioning of multifamily development in the MFOD. The following additional provisions shall also apply. And Amy has agreed to write that language if you guys would so wish. I'm not sure that you need to, though. Amy writes, "Since multifamily isn't allowed, you, site plan or Section 175-77 cannot be used to deny a project. If the planning board would like, I can suggest changes to the section to reinforce that, such as adding Section 175-77(c)(2) shall not apply to development within the MFOD."
Which is what she did put in.
Okay.
That's in there.
Yeah.
So, we could, that's for that?
Yeah.
All right.
You guys are okay with that? Again, it's a, I think it's a
Yeah.
reinforcement that what you can do in the totter R20, you can't do here, and you can't do this there.
Yeah. What it really, what it really says is that you can't create a-
Unreasonable.
Yeah.
Lockage.
That it's, does not preserve or enhance the amenities of the town, and that's the reason we're designing, we're going to deny the site plan. You're entitled to site plan, or you, but you can't fabricate a reason to say no. Okay? Hate to use the word fabricate, but I think-
It's all about compliance.
Yeah.
Compliance, compliance, compliance. Okay. Okay, and then the next item called out is Section Three, allowing a development to be constructed in multiple phases. The Attorney General was concerned that some zoning bylaws use phasing as a method to avoid inclusionary zoning. And I think Amy said back that the planning board, if they wanted to phase a plan, would require equal amount of affordable units in each phase. So, I'm not sure that we have to add anything here. Just remember that later on down the road, if you guys want to phase a project, say it's, you know, a hundred, two-hundred units and-
Well, you know, I don't think it would hurt to add that wording to tell you the truth, because that way it makes it clear. You know, I mean, as you said, down the road, it's something for us to consider, but if it's spelled out specifically in the language, then we'll know from the get-go to consider that. That's just my opinion.
So, each phase would have an equitable distribution?
I'm not trying to add more words, but I am, I guess, I just want this to be clear.
Affordable units in each phase?
Yes.
What does equitable mean?
Equal. You want me to take that out?
She used the word equal.
I, I, no, I understand what the definition of the word is. I'm trying to understand what what it's trying to get at, what, what is-
So, say you had a large project company for you?
We're going to allow phasing, yes.
You're going to phase it, so maybe if it was-
And in each phase, it has to be-
Like a hundred and, yeah, whatever, a hundred and fifty units, and you were going to do a three-year phase, fifty in each phase. So, each of those phases would have to have the concurrent amount of inclusionary units, which is the ten percent. So, if it's fifty units for a phase, then it would be five inclusionary units for each phase that would have to be built in very simple math.
Okay.
Right, so they couldn't, I guess what they're trying to say is you can't say- Right, so they couldn't, I guess what they're trying to say is you can't, um, say, well, we're not gonna do any inclusionary units in the first or second phases, and we'll build them all in the third phase, and then they go, oh, we can't.
Yeah, conversely, if, yeah, okay.
And conversely, they can't.
Somebody could come in and say, well, we're gonna do fifteen percent in the first phase.
Right.
If you're gonna, if you'll allow us to build none in this phase, it's two and three.
Think that waiver section at the end could allow you to negotiate that if they wanted to do, you know, seven upfront, and then three in the next one, you know what I mean? Phase it in that way.
Okay.
As long as the larger number was probably upfront. Right, and so instead of waiting till the end till they get built, and then all of a sudden they can't get built. Or they wanna pay us in lieu, cause that's another way to do that in the air.
Yep.
Alright, thanks for putting that in, Liz.
Alright, um. Okay, I think Attorney Riley questioned, um, under modifications to approved site plans, minor change, uh, second, third sentence down, a change of five percent more or less in the number of housing units in a development shall constitute a minor change.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I didn't know what that meant. Five percent more or less, or five percent more or five percent less? Does that mean that if you approve a development of ten units, and I decide to increase it by five percent, it's a minor change, so I don't need your approval? Or if I decrease it on my own, I don't need your, I was just curious as to the wording. I, I said, do you mean to say a reduction in the number of approved housing units, or an increase of up to five percent in the number of housing units and associated parking spaces shall constitute a minor change? I think that, I'm assuming the board wouldn't mind if they reduced the number of units, but would wanna have approval if there was an increase in the number of units over five percent. I just, I found the wording to be curious.
Um, do you guys wanna change it so that it says a change of five percent more or five percent less in the number of housing units? Cause that's very specific either way.
So that's, what would be our objection if somebody came in with five percent less?
I don't think there'd be an objection, it just would be a change to the plan that you'd like to have on file before it starts getting built.
Five percent more or five percent less, by definition being minor, and as a result, they don't have to come back in with a revised, with a.
Well, minor changes must be submitted to the planning board in accordance with the planning board's multifamily overlay district rules and regulations.
Right, and so if it's, if it's a major change, then you need home site plan application.
Which is a significant hurdle for somebody.
I think minor is sort of, um, what we do now, right? If it's not necessarily a field change, but they look at the plan and say, oh, you know, we wanna add one more unit or something, like, they'll come back. Right, or they get in the field, and then that is a field change, but, um, they'll sometimes come back and say, listen, we didn't.
So this is, as it's written, if there is a minor change, that minor change can be submitted to you at a regular meeting, and you can approve it. You don't need a whole new hearing, and you don't need a whole new application. So how do we define minor change? And I just thought the wording of a change of five percent more or less to the number of housing units isn't proper grammar. So thought of a change of up to five percent in the number of housing units? And that could mean either way, by saying it that way.
Yeah.
That's a minor change. But don't say five percent more or less. I think it can be read the way, the sarcastic way I'm reading it. Five percent, six percent, five percent more or less. That's not what you mean, right?
Right, you wouldn't think.
Four quarters, whenever it gets a job done.
So I think a change of up to five percent in the number of housing units would work.
Is that agreeable?
Uh, I think that's reasonable.
Say it again? I'm sorry.
Instead of saying that a change of five percent more or less is considered minor, you say a change of up to five percent is considered minor. Or, or you can make whatever, you can say ten percent if you want, but right now it's five percent.
Yeah, change of five percent in the number of housing units.
Change of up to five percent.
Either way, so we're not adding.
Any change in the number of units needs, they need to notify you, whether they're going up or down, they'll just change it one unit, they, they should notify you of this.
Right.
Um, and if it's, as long as it's up to five percent change, it's just at a meeting, no new application. If they, for some reason, come back and say, we need to cut a bunch of units, or we wanna add a bunch of units, that's a whole new application.
Okay, alright, alright. I just wanna make sure that wasn't that, uh, if we approved two hundred units, they can build two hundred and nine, and not need to come back before us.
Uh, any change is coming back to you.
Alright.
It's just whether it's a minor or a major.
Okay, alright.
And I guess we're trying to hammer down the definition of minor.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I just had a quick question. Uh, let's see, uh, rules and regulations shall include redlined prints of the approved plan. Now, redlined can mean lots of different things. Could you explain the use of that word there, please?
So it's, um, in my mind, it's, they would take the approved plan that the board had approved, and they would redline, redline the changes that they wanted to make, right? So wherever they showed those units, oh, there's a copywriter on the chair, too. So then they would show the changes with the red lines on the plan for the board to review, kind of either approve or disapprove.
Alright.
Um, so one of the other changes in that paragraph, which is not highlighted, um, but it's the planning board shall issue a written decision to approve or deny. That was actually added by Amy in an earlier version, so it's not highlighted, and I apologize, but that is a change as well, the word shall, cause I think it was a choice there, and she picked shall. So if that is okay?
The one other item on this that I'll, I'll throw out, and, you know, you may recall, Liz, when this was first, for the first draft of this was put out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had, I, I was a little uneasy about the notion of a percentage.
On the plantings?
In the absence of an absolute number. So five percent of a thousand is a much larger number than five percent of a hundred. And the former would be major by any definition in my mind. So I had something of a problem with uh, setting the standard of the regulation by way of percentage
Mm-hmm.
in the absence of an absolute number. And I think, I don't think we ever got an answer back.
No.
On that, so for what it's worth.
It's good point. A hundred units, if they were to add up to five, it's minor. Anything over is major, they have to go start all over again.
I, I think, right?
Yeah.
Depending upon how, how, yeah, what the original size of the development is.
Right, if it's a two hundred unit development, that, anything over ten units would require a whole new application.
Um, but under major change, it says, change is deemed by the planning board to constitute a major change in an approved development because of the nature of the change, or because the change cannot be appropriately characterized, characterized as a minor change under paragraph A above shall be processed by the planning board as a new site plan application. So I think that gives you a little wiggle on there, um, outside of the percentage. Um, because with a percentage change in units, even though it might be smaller, with the smaller, like with a hundred units, right? I'm not saying that's small by any stretch of the imagination, but, um, that's, in your head, you can, you can see that, but if it were two hundred or three hundred units, which then becomes a bigger, bigger, a bigger, bigger piece of it, you could always ask, because then that's gonna affect parking and.
Sure.
Right, all sorts of stuff going on there, so I, I don't think it's unreasonable for the board to ask for them to come back with a whole new application.
To your point as an example, if there was a hundred unit complex, and they had a, they're gonna have four, five units, it's considered minor, but then you look at the proposed plan, and they're now, they have to change their parking, they're gonna move the retention areas, and now it's near a neighbor's house, and you're saying, no, this is much more than minor, we're gonna require you to come back.
Right.
So as long as we retain that viability.
Yeah, that major change section, yeah.
Then fine.
I think that will, um, I think that will suffice. I mean, and, you know, we can always come back next year if we find stuff is not working, and modify it.
Yep. Yep, the hope is that we won't be visiting this in the next year.
Me and you both, y'all lips to goddamn. Um, so I think we're at the end of the rainbow here, and it says, uh, I think the last change is, Attorney Riley suggested we add section J, and definition amendments applicable to this bylaw. And then, um, for purposes of this multifamily overlay district zoning bylaw, the following definitions shall apply. So we would add that language and then, um, put the definitions in after that.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I think that's very clear, and it doesn't, people won't be confused, or agree to that. So everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna add the date of the map, and that's okay. And the language at the top, adding the zoning map was okay. And, um, under the applicability, the uses and dimensional controls of the MFOD are not subject to any special permit requirements of the underlying district. We already talked about that, but I'm just confirming that's okay. Okay, and then, um, adding those, um, two sections, one seventy-five twenty-eight and one seventy-five thirty-two under applicability, uh, multifamily development in the MFOD shall not be subject to one seventy-five twenty-eight and one seventy-five thirty-two of this bylaw, and it's in reference to minimum floor area requirements. Um, everybody was okay with that?
Yep.
Um, the thirty-five feet as minimum frontage, is everybody okay with that?
Uh, yep.
What was the reasoning, just as moderator?
Oh, um.
That was the smallest existing.
That was the smallest existing frontage we had, was thirty-eight feet. So thirty-five would be generally the closest thing to that.
Which, for the people at home, if you, if you own a thirty-five foot wide lot, you're gonna have a lot of trouble complying with the rest of the bylaw. There's other requirements, so it's not throwing the baby out with the bathrobe.
No.
That's, that was based upon, um, something Amy had encountered or learned in working with another town.
Judy Barrett, yes.
Judy.
Yep, yep, um, a lot of bouncing balls going on, yes, so Judy Barrett called this afternoon, and, um, she had just learned of this issue, and asked that we look at ours quickly, so.
Okay.
Yep. Um, then the screening is okay. We're just leaving it as the buffer may include a fence of no more than six feet. And the light trespass onto adjoining properties was okay, the bicycle parking, we're changing. That says for multifamily development, there shall be a minimum of one bicycle storage space per two dwelling units. And then to, under buildings, to encourage clustering of buildings and preservation of open space placed in the building shall be subject to review and comment by the fire chief for safety purposes, that was okay.
We eliminated the word covering, covered?
Covered, yes, we eliminated covered, and.
Yep.
Um, we upped the ratio of one bicycle storage space per one unit to.
Yep.
One per two. Um, and then the changes under twelve to multifamily development within the FMOD, that's sort of just reinforcing that it's multifamily, um, regulations, that was okay.
Take out the word project.
Yeah. And residential, and then take out the word the in front of section.
How did project get in there?
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, and then, uh, MFOD development plan approval, that first line, uh, we're adding to the maximum extent possible, um, development within the MFOD shall be subject to one seventy-five seventy-seven of this bylaw to the maximum extent possible. Section one seventy-five seventy-seven C two shall not apply to multifamily development within the MFOD, and no provision of one seventy-five seventy-seven shall allow a denial or unreasonable conditioning of a multifamily development in the MFOD. Um, those were changes by Amy, and those were good. And then the next question was about the, um, phases, and we're gonna add, each phase would have an equal distribution of affordable units. And then, um, minor change.
Stipulated that to be ten percent, right?
Hmm?
That's stipulated to be ten percent?
Ten percent inclusionary zoning, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
For any development of ten or more units, I think.
Ten or more units, and then there's a low-end payment fee. Payment in lieu.
Yeah.
In lieu.
Pilot.
The pilot, yeah. Um, and then a change of five percent in the number of housing units under minor change, and the planning board shall issue a written decision.
A change of up to five percent. So any change between zero and five percent.
I just wrote a change of five percent in the number of housing units.
Up to.
Should say up to five percent. So if it's a three percent change, you still gotta get notified.
Okay, and then the last is the adding section J definition amendments, and then applicable to this bylaw, and adding the language, um, for purposes of the multifamily overlay district zoning bylaw, following definition shall apply. And then keeping what's in there, and that's okay, right?
I'm not gonna read you, ask you to read it all over.
Thank you. Um, I did give you guys a quick cheat sheet, and you just gotta add that thirty-five. Um, yeah, the only difference is that thirty-five foot frontage change. But that's a quick cheat sheet for changes. So we can't vote on these tonight, but everybody's agreeable to those changes, so we can get a fabulously clean coffee into the water.
Mr. Riley is gonna staple it, I'm having.
Dude.
Do it the last three days. I'll update that according to what you want, and you guys can then vote on it later. If you can just give me the date to fill in.
Alright.
Um, and then you can review it, I'll make sure we have the same notes.
So the updates will be applied, returned back to Liz, and then April first, we'll.
Yes. You'll, in essence, vote that document, and then, um, I left you some other, um, proposed changes that we can look at April first for the FEMA MEMA stuff, and it really just makes it a cleaner way to get it voted. Um, but all the, the intent of what we're supposed to do is still there.
Can I ask what, um, questions, uh, the zoning enforcement officer reached out to you about?
Um, one was the dimensional table.
Yep.
Um, and I'm not, I don't exactly remember what that was, it was, um, I think who wrote the bylaw was one of them, and then one of them was about that dimensional table, and could it be changed? And I believe I responded, um, that the consultant heavily discouraged change in the density and dimensional table, because it was, she had worked it out so that those dimensions would allow eighteen units per acre.
Okay.
Those are the only two that I can remember off the top of my head.
Alright, so for the, for the board members, I watched the last couple zoning board meetings, and the one in early February, they had a discussion on it, and clearly didn't understand it. Um, and I think at one point, one question they certainly had was about the dimensional table. Uh, they were very discouraged by the dimensions that were included in the dimensional table, and apparently didn't realize that they're very similar to the existing TOD district, which I found really strange, that the ZBA didn't recognize that. Um, I also found it odd that the staff at the table didn't point that out to them as well, but maybe they didn't feel comfortable at the time. But there were also comments made, um, it sounded like they assumed that this zoning district is applying to a half, uh, half-mile radius around the entire area, including behind Spencer's Pizza and all those wooded areas. They very much made comments about where this is going to go. It very much seemed to me they didn't understand that, no, this is about six or seven specific parcels. Um, so I, I feel like we need to, again, reach out to the zoning board and clarify the situation, since they didn't bother to take the time to come to any of the dozen meetings we've had, or ask us directly about any of this, and is apparently making assumptions. Cause I really would rather not get into another discussion about this on the floor of town meeting.
Amen.
So, um.
So just to your. So just to your way of Bruce did reach out to me. I emailed him your concerns to see if you guys wanted to talk about it tonight and he had Kevin email them again this morning and they're not here. We will email them again about April first.
Yep.
But, I mean, they're not meeting again before April first.
Right.
And, you know, at this point in time, I have, I mean, I can print the emails that I have sent to Marion and asked her to forward to them. You know, multi versions of the bylaw when we had changes, maps, I think. I'd have to go back and check because now it's several months ago at this point. I, I get where you guys are going because I'm the one standing up there. So I get it, but I don't, I don't know how else to reach them. Right? I mean, I sent the stuff to Marion and I asked her to pass along and in every one of those emails was please attend the meeting, these are the dates, this is the time.
Well, the frustrating part was at the last meeting...
And please let me know if you have any questions.
At the last meeting, they got the invite to our hearing and their response formally was to say, thank you, we received it.
Did you at any point send the YouTube link for the session that was done?
I honest to God don't remember, but we're going to start pushing that out.
So that would be good to send.
But I will happily, Kevin, if you could write a note for us to do that tomorrow?
Yes.
We'll happily send it along to them.
This goes back to a conversation that you and I had several years ago.
Which one was that?
Before I was sitting on this board.
You're right.
Mortified with what was going on on town meeting floor between zoning and planning and I don't remember what the specific circumstance was, but it, it just made everybody look bad.
Yep, the more communication, the more education, the better for everyone. And again, I thought that the show that we taped, I thought it was very informative and I think the more people can watch that and right now, I think they can get it by going on the town website
Yep.
and going to the planning board page.
Yep, and then MBTA communities.
There's a link to the MBTA information that pops right up.
People up there watching.
Map is, is there, right, in that?
I'm not sure, we can double check that the maps, what maps are up and, okay, and then maybe we can get the other ones up?
Get everything up.
Yeah, well, so we can get as much information up as possible. So before April first, that I have everybody here, what do you think? Or should we bring anything to town meeting? Should we bring a map?
As moderator, I try to limit the amount of the use of the screen, although it would be a lot of it, but in this instance, I think the overlay map location would be appropriate.
I was talking about printout and bringing them too, I mean...
You could print some out if you want, I just, I just hate to print a hundred and fifty of them if, put one up there. They'll have the text of the bylaw. So I think really it's just where is this?
Okay.
And put that, we'll have that up there.
I think the text of the bylaw on a map with the handout, regardless of whether or not we put it up on the screen. Because people flipping through this, this language is, you know, it's a lot of language here, but if they can see the map.
Yep.
That would be a key thing, I think.
Well, we, I think we have to include the map anyway because we're updating, right?
It's referred to as being on file. If you would like to attach it as a page to the warrant, I think that's fine, that'd be great.
Alright.
Yeah.
So
If we could do that.
We're trying to finalize the warrant to get it out. The postcards went out to the residents saying that the warrant is on the website and it's not actually because we're waiting for a couple more pieces of information to get a good final version out there. Should be there within probably two days. And we'll continue to update it if more information comes up. But right now we'll have a warrant. I have it back behind me. A warrant and then we're going to have a separate handout, which will have the budget like we've done in previous town meetings and a separate handout for the proposed charter amendments. The map itself, we could attach to warrant.
I was going to say we can print it on a back page or something.
Yeah, we'll get it there.
I mean, this is almost as, I mean, this is as important to me as the naval air station stuff was. And, you know, we had the map for that too, you know.
Yep.
Rick and, and, you know, Rick Collins, true Rick's here. This conversation that you had with Liz and stuff like that. I wanted, you know, again, take another attempt to reach out to the ZBA and also talk about this tonight at this meeting, which we've done.
Yeah.
So this is great.
I just want to make sure we've done everything we can to feed this information to people who need to have it.
Yeah.
And I think we have.
Yeah. Well, God, we've tried...
I sent out, the emails, I know, and the emails I sent were to almost every board and committee. So everybody was invited.
I'd like to talk to Liz and whoever plans to speak on this article before town meeting, you know, a couple days. Just so I know who I'm going to be calling on and what to expect. I would suggest that you also include, and I'm sure you're going to do it, include how the situation here in Abington with our implementation of this bylaw is much less, is much more different than some other communities. To our advantage, I would say, if we've had this discussion...
We'll go back to the top.
Yeah, and I think that video that Mr. Shepherd referenced is, mentions that a few times too.
Yep.
I think actually we got some big kudos from our consultant for laying the groundwork so long ago, I think is what's in there.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I mentioned this to Liz after our last meeting, I didn't realize how far behind some other towns are. Like their accounts are just starting the consultancy piece of this.
Yeah, I talked to a bunch of communities at this Citizens Planner Training Collaborative thing and we're so far ahead, it's crazy compared to a lot of communities.
But the, the other note I saw was some of the articles reflecting communities who are basically including in their districts, areas where they've already developed. And I kind of not wanted to overstep on that because I kind of wanted, didn't want to draw too much attention, but it doesn't seem like they're getting much pushback from the state for using that avenue. I think the state's kind of giving, unless I'm mistaken, I think we tell everybody we want to work Littleton or something where they already have those districts built out.
Yep.
And the state doesn't seem to be saying, oh, no, 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 you can't do that. So I think they're giving, that's our little reward for having done this work already. Is that if you've already done this, okay, then you're, you're done. And that's kind of our reward for having done all this in the past.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Fingers crossed, God willing.
Well, you guys also have to know that this has already been approved by four, the state has already approved four or five of these things.
Not ours.
Not ours yet. Not ours yet.
We are in for pretty compliance, but I, I think what's happening with those four or five that have been approved and the ones that they're still approving, they're, things are coming up that they were not aware of. And that that's sort of what I got from our consultant today was like, they're starting to look at stuff that they didn't realize, so...
They didn't mean the state?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. The state are going to find all of a sudden, oh, wait, no, we didn't mean you could do this.
Right. So right now gently, speedily get to a town meeting and get it done and
Yeah.
Right? I think it, I think they would be hard pressed and I think this is part of, honest to God, I've had several people tell me this, that they're getting different information from EOL, HCC and the Attorney General's Office and you know, one day they ask a question, they get a different answer each day and and I think because it's kind of chaotic right now, right? There's this timeline and then now those deadlines are starting to roll in. And they're trying to get all of this stuff either approved or pre-qualified and so anyway, we just...
And when we go to town meeting, I'm going to ask you not to use acronyms.
I'm not, because you know what you're going to get out of me, A B C D E F G? E O L H C A B C D E F.
Well, you know, it'd be cool, I know we don't have the space, but wouldn't it be cool if we had a a report, you know, that would list the acronyms? I mean, when I used to write the Conference of Economic Development Strategy, Old Colony Planning Council, I had a section in there that had a list of all the acronyms that we talked about.
Yeah, but we cannot use them and we'll have to look at it instead of saying OCPC, Old Colony Planning Council. Say it out loud so people understand and follow you.
I used to review grad school projects at the National Public Administration Program at BSU and I used to tell the kids...
What's BSU?
What's Holy Cross? Isn't it the College of the Holy Cross?
Yeah, but it is A H C.
But I mean, seriously, you know, rather than use the acronyms.
Right.
Spell out. Even though it might take a little bit more time, it's better to, for people to understand.
And we are scheduling our annual review with town council and the financial offices of the entire warrant, which we hope to do on this Wednesday. We're going to confirm if this is a majority vote. The two FEMA articles are two-thirds votes. Typical zoning amendments are two-thirds votes. There was some legislation passed by the state about some multi-family zoning bylaws could require a majority vote. We're going to confirm that in advance. And if it, I'll probably note that on the warrant as to what the vote threshold is, so people are aware.
Yeah, we talked about that at Citizens Planner, to make sure that you have to know what's two-thirds, one-fifth, blah, 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 blah.
Yep. Good job, thank you.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Oh, listen, Vader?
Nice.
Alright. Night, everyone.
Night, thank you.